We'll be postponing a little bit, a couple of minutes while we all look to get on the Internet because we are having Internet problems. So, okay.
I'm just gonna, I've got, yeah.
Do you want that on to board box?
Yeah.
I'm not, but Amy gave us the mine. We're potentially share off of that and they could potentially share off of her screen.
Did you get in, Andrea? Because, so, I've got an extra.
Clear your cookies. And then she just sent a link, direct link in her email.
Oh, to the Internet?
To the board box.
Oh, well.
Was your Internet not working?
The Internet's not working. I'm working on my mobile hotspot.
Oh, okay, me too. All right. Ask words for hotspots down there, or are you good? Okay, okay. All right, well, we'll get it going.
If we have to postpone, we'll postpone. All right.
I've got paper copies.
Would you rather use this?
That's okay, I'm good.
Welcome to today's school board meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District. The mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities, and I will apologize to all in the gallery and all online. We're having Internet problems, so there may be some hiccups as we go, but so far, we're good to go. All right, has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted at the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills Post Office and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
All right, the mission statement for the Lake Mills Area School District is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. I will call this meeting to order and I will invite all in attendance to please join, that Ava, please join and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I request a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslik, here. Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. All right, then, I will call this meeting to, oh, la, 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 okay.
Okay, are there any revisions to the agenda? Hearing, oh, hearing none?
The board approved the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right, we will move into the section for board reports, and the first one is up is School Resource Officer Report. So I will ask Chief Schrader and School Resource Officer Johnson for the presentation.
Good evening. I have a PowerPoint, but I won't kill you by reading the PowerPoint. It's just, I sent it to you in advance, so hopefully you had a chance to look at it. We'll go through it. You can read it as we go. If you have any questions about anything on it, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm just gonna kind of give an overview of where we're at. Next slide. So, just as a starting point, because we signed the SRO agreement in December, we used January 1st as our starting point for data collection. We didn't collect data up until that point specifically for the purpose of providing the report to you, so I just went back to January 1st, which covers a little bit of the first semester and all of the semester or trimesters here, semesters, and all of the second semester. So the data we're talking about today is for January 1 through the end of the school year. Next slide. The outline that I used to prepare this report was based on the SRO agreement. There were specific areas that the board requested or that we put into the agreement that I would report on to the board. So that's the outline that I used. One of the areas was actions to build relationships. So these are some of the highlights, are some of the things that were done to build relationships that are outside of the normal teaching or response to calls or incidents that, that we would normally do that are documented elsewhere. So going to prom, going to homecoming, Christmas story to kindergarten, just some of the extra things that Officer Johnson did with students during the course of a school day. Another topic was preventive actions. This is really the meat and potatoes, I think, of what Officer Johnson is doing at the schools. So working with staff on training for active assailant or response to active assailants, safety planning, training crossing guards, putting out information on the Speak Up, Speak Out program, which is a confidential reporting program that students can report issues such as bullying or threats or anything like that, mentor programs, crisis plans that she develops with individual families. Next slide.
Quick question on the previous one. Is that Speak Up, Speak Out, I had heard rumors with the new state budget, is that now kaput, or is that?
So with the budget, they did not provide additional funding. So I would assume once the funding runs out, unless they find another funding source, it probably will cease to exist. But I'm thinking the Office of School Safety is looking for ways to fund the program. Hopefully, they maintain it in some fashion. It just may not be what it was.
Did it ever affect, did, did, was there ever tips that were for us, for Lake Mills?
We had one tip during this last school year that came in, and we investigated. It ended up being a false tip of a potential threat at the school. So we were able to identify the person who gave the tip and deal with that matter for providing a false tip that caused the reaction that it did.
Okay, thank you.
The other preventive actions are all the, all the teaching or educating that she does in the classroom related to our DARE curriculum for several of our grade levels, curriculum for vaping, sexting, drugs and alcohol for our ninth graders, and as well as current event lessons she does with 11th grade students. This year, we also had some incidents of locker room theft or theft from the locker room. So she worked with school staff to do some deterrence activities in the locker room. Basically, going in the locker room, checking, finding money or things that were unsecured, taking that to the office and then providing counseling to the students who own those things to teach them how to secure their valuables so they aren't victimized. Next slide. Another category to report on are incidents requiring law enforcement service. So I have a lot of slides to follow, or a few slides to follow that kind of have the data of what types of incidents we responded to, what the dispositions were of those incidents and how they were broken down by school within the district and at Lakeside Lutheran. So some of the incidents were just student support meetings that involved human services with kind of a wraparound program where students are using services through human services, reentry meetings with students after suspension. So before they're integrated back into the school, they have reentry meetings, meetings with parents who have repeated delinquent behaviors or severe delinquent behaviors, speed enforcement in mornings and afternoon. We got a lot of complaints, especially down around the high school in Lakeside Lutheran about speeding in the morning and afternoon. So some directed patrol by Officer Johnson as well as our patrol staff, and then just a response to all different types of complaints, which we'll break down in the following slides. So as would be expected, the all other category is kind of all encompassing, is going to be the largest category. Some of the things that would fall under all other incidents are bullying, harassment, disorderly conduct, all of those kind of things that may have happened at school, threats against students. Drugs is pretty self-explanatory. That includes vaping that involved THC. Sensitive crimes would be sexual assaults or mental health related, like suicidal students, someone would give an evaluation on. Truancy is pretty self-explanatory, and then vaping, non-THC vaping. I separated out vaping with tobacco versus THC went into the drugs category. So general number of incidents that we had, now that's by school, vast majority at the high school, followed by the middle school, followed by the elementary school, and a small number at Lakeside. And then I broke down by school and by type of offense or incident. Truancy was by far the, the most common thing, it seemed, other than all other, and you just break down by school of what you have. Truancy at the high school and the middle school, really, vaping at the high school, middle school, and then Lakeside. Thankfully, none at the elementary school. And then sensitive crimes, again, were middle school and the high schools. Student searches was a category to report on. So obviously, that's a topic of concern anytime that we're searching students. Sometimes we're requested to assist school staff with searching students. But we started with doing a couple of canine searches at the high schools. That's where they'll bring our canine in, along with our canine officer, as well as Jefferson County, a couple of canines that they have, and we'll do a search of the parking lot as well as the school, really focusing on lockers in the school and then vehicles in the parking lot. Thankfully, in both of the searches that we did, one at our, at the public high school and one at Lakeside Lutheran, there were not any drugs that were located during those searches. There were some indications that was probably just some residual odors that maybe were on clothes or something like that. And then, we skipped a little bit here, but there were two times that we were asked to physically search a student. Both of those were involving vaping incidents where students were suspected of vaping in a bathroom, were approached by staff and Officer Johnson or our patrol officers were asked to assist with searching them because they didn't provide the vaping device that they had on their person. Enforcement actions, you can see warnings are our most common enforcement action, whether that's a verbal warning or a written warning. Some incidents were unfounded, some referred to other law enforcement agencies. So in all of the incidents that I'm reporting, all of them came to our attention through the schools in one way or another. They didn't all happen at the schools. So for example, if there was a sexual assault that happened at a home, but it was reported during the school day to school staff, it was included in this data. But if it happened, for example, when a student was at home and they live in Jefferson, we would refer that to the Jefferson Police Department or whatever police department would handle it. So that's what referred to other law enforcement agency would mean. An other disposition is generally something that's handled by the school through their discipline process or counseling process, but we didn't necessarily counsel or warn that student. A juvenile referral is a formal referral for delinquent charges to human services, so the equivalent of an arrest if they were an adult. Counseling is, verbal counseling, citations, the vast majority of which you'll see were for truancy, and that's normally after repeated warnings for truancy before we get to the citation stage. And then we have a couple of cases that are, are still active and don't have a disposition yet.
Question again. Did any of the, like, I know that you said the speeding, you were looking at speeding coming to and from the high school in there. Is that, those tickets in there, or is that not, I mean, that's probably in the city part of it?
Right, yeah. No, the traffic citations or stops, I did not track in any of this data. It's just time was spent doing it, but I didn't differentiate stops during that. And then just breaking down the type of offense by disposition. Again, it's just some data to show you where we're issuing warnings, where we're issuing citations or juvenile referrals, so you can process that, I guess, I guess, how you want. Yes?
Question. For truancy, how many warnings does a person get, or a family?
I will let Officer Johnson answer that.
Thank you. We usually don't write the citation until seventh offense, so that's seven days over the 10 days. So a student is allowed 10 days in a school year. So they get multiple warnings, there's multiple phone calls. Mr. Gish, I can probably explain that just as well as I can. Parent meetings, all of that. So there's a number of procedural steps that have to be followed until the citation is issued. And then even when we do issue the citation, the court process, we've kind of changed that up a little bit too. We meet before the regular court proceedings here with the family in one of the smaller conference rooms with the judge, with the city attorney, and we just try to come up with some sort of plan to figure out why the student is not in school and what can we do to get them back in school. So it's not very punitive. I mean, it's, in fact, I couldn't even tell you how many have actually gone to a citation, probably only two. The rest have been, like, held open with counseling and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and next slide. And then the, the final topic was training. That was part of the discussion as we were going over the agreement and processing that is what type of training would, would Officer Johnson attend. So I said see attached, but I didn't give you the attachments until today, and that's in paper form. So in that attachment, I really outlined the initial training that she went to last July, I believe it was, was the School Resource Officer training, and that's the first page of your handout, and that breaks down what all of the training sessions were. So some of the topics and things that we had discussed were, you know, adolescent brain development, so we're treating adolescents differently than we're treating adults, supporting students with disabilities, trauma-informed practices, developing successful relationships with diverse students, verbal de-escalation. So a lot of those topics that we discussed during our, the process of coming to our agreement were covered in that initial training. And then the second page covers both the School Resource Officer Training Conference that she went to last month. Again, just a breakdown of the topics that were covered there, and then the Advanced Crisis Intervention Team, which was focused on youth crisis intervention that Officer Johnson attended in May, and a list of, of topics at that training. I'll leave it to Officer Johnson if you have questions about any of the, the training or topics or anything else related to training.
Yes, thank you. Just a question, since there's so much happening in schools around the nation, is, is there anything this year that's kind of unique in your mind that they maybe focused a little more on?
I, I think that mental health is a big key, or was a big key, in a lot of my trainings. In the advanced CIT, that's crisis intervention. I did the CIT, the regular a few years ago, and then the advanced one is really just mental health crises in the school. I think that that was a huge focus.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see that there are, there appear to be some supplemental trainings here that weren't, you know, trainings in the, the main NASRO training, which is, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the same training that you've, you've gone through multiple times now, correct?
The NASRO?
Yes.
Yes, I did that years ago twice, and then this was the third time. So it changes, I'm sure it's different than what I did. It's more up to date.
Okay, and I'm glad to see that there's some training on understanding special education law, de-escalation training, trauma-informed training. We did have listed in the contract equity training to be provided by the district. I'm wondering what efforts have been made to, to do equity training.
I don't know if Megan or Tasha can speak to that. I have been invited to attend the regular trainings for, at the new beginning of the school year, but other than that, I don't know of any that have happened by the school district.
Yeah, and I would have to follow up, excuse me, to find out what might be in the works, but I haven't heard any rumblings at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I was, oh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, I know, like, Lakeside Lutheran is in there. Do we, do you have a financial contract with Lakeside Lutheran, or is it more like we had in the past with you where you're just kind of a, working through the city?
We do not have a financial contract with them, and I think the reason behind that is the funding for the school district's share of this position comes through Fund 80.
Okay.
Which has to provide services to the entire community that falls within the area of the school district.
Gotcha.
So that was the reasoning, I think, in the original discussion as to why we cover Lakeside as well as St. Paul's. We just didn't have any incidents at St. Paul's, that's why they weren't in that data.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, when it comes to, like, the warning section, I guess, of, in any of the categories, does, kind of like for truancy, is there a certain number of times you can receive a warning before we move into the next stage, and then is that warning tracked and then followed, you know, say, in the next school year? Like, this is kind of what you were seeing in a pattern, and then, okay, we've already seen this pattern, so now we're going to move on to the next stage? Do you kind of understand what I'm asking?
I'll, I'll let her answer specifics, but in general terms, I would say in school or outside of school, it's very case-specific. If we have someone who's done a bunch of different things, a bunch of different violations, and they've had warnings across a bunch of different areas, we may be more apt to then move to a citation in something that maybe they even haven't been warned for before. Or if someone does repeated similar offenses, we would. But I'll let Jess speak to the number or kind of how she handles it in the school.
Thank you. I think the, the easiest way to respond to that is that we kind of do a collaborative, you know, group, kind, we come together and figure out what's going to be the best way to help this particular kid. Everybody's individual, a lot of times, if I give a warning, it's done with that. But there are other kids, like Chief said, there's multiple things, and that's when we try to get the parents involved with human services as well, and figure out what's going to work for that specific kid. We try lots of different things with the school psychologists, with the guidance counselors, with myself. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we've tried with multiple kids. And I've actually talked to Mr. Gish on the other principals, like, this year, I would like to, in August, have meetings with some of those families, or like, those repeat offenders, if you will, the chronic kids that I'm constantly getting called about, and just kind of say, hey, we can't have this. This is what's going to happen, and let them know what the procedure's going to be. Like, yes, they're going to get a warning, but if it continues, we're going to have the juvenile referral, or whatever it may be. I want to see all of them be successful, and we just need to figure out what works for that particular kid.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, well, we thank you, Chief and Jessica, and it was, we, it's been a wonderful addition, in my personal opinion, so.
And I would just leave the note, if there's anything that's not in the report or something you'd like to see, or different categories, how you would like it broken down, just let us know, preferably before the school year starts, so we can try, find a way to track that data, the way that you want it presented to you. So this is kind of just the categories that I came up with based on what we saw. And then the follow-up would be it's not on the agenda, so we won't discuss it, but I look forward to coming back before you, hopefully to discuss another agreement for this coming school year and beyond. So thank you.
Super, thank you. All right, moving on to another, Board Reports B, Mr. Imers, the clerk.
Sure. The board received a thank you note from the Wisconsin Public Education Network. It reads, Ms. Litcher, thank you for your district's contribution to WPN. With your financial backing, we will continue to support the public school grassroots organizations across the state. WPN provides resources, training and expertise to local groups and connects them to one another. Thank you for your leadership in these efforts. And that was from Julie. Couldn't really read the last name, so I won't even try.
All right, is that everything?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to administrative reports, and we will turn it over to Principal Gisha.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I apologize in advance, I'm just getting over a summer cold, so if I'm sniffling a little bit, that's why. Summer school has been off to a really great start this year. We've already completed our first 12-day session and are headed into the final five days. We only have four days left of our session two. We have a great team of teachers, paraeducators, high school TAs, bus drivers, substitutes and secretaries that are all doing a phenomenal job and providing a unique and exciting opportunity for all of our students. Just want to share a couple of statistics for you from this year, some of them that are, are pretty awesome. We currently have, and I rounded up just a little bit, we actually have 845 students that are enrolled in our summer school program. That includes students that are taking traditional summer school classes, that's the four periods a day, or just one period, whether it be at the high school for a credit recovery, or even at the elementary or middle school, or weight training, or additional offerings that I'll talk about in the next slide. These students span across 70 different class offerings. We have 51 teachers, both district and non-district teachers, who are either working one or both sessions. There's 18 paraeducators, and a majority of those are district employees that came and worked for the summer, and 13 high school and college TAs that assist in the classrooms in some of our larger classes or classes that need an additional hand. Our staff has been really amazing this year, and I cannot thank them enough for the willingness to give up parts of their summers to provide this incredible opportunity for all of our students. In addition to our traditional summer school and those other classes I talked about, there's some other things that we offer that we also can count towards part of our summer school as well. So our music teachers have been offering private, individual and group lessons to over 100 students. You can see how it's actually 116 as of this afternoon, but that number was kind of changing a little bit. Our swim lessons, and that's band, choir, orchestra, five through 12, that also includes some of our summer parades, so town and country days parades, orchestra plays at the summer market, and just some other spatterings of, of group performances here as well. Swim lessons, we have six sessions of swim lessons that, that happen every day during second session in the afternoon with five levels of increasing difficulties or skill level at each session. We have five instructors and two certified lifeguards, and this year, we have 186 students that are enrolled in our swim lessons, which is an increase of 68 from last summer. So our numbers are going up. People really enjoy that in the summer, and it's a really unique thing that we offer. I was just talking to Ms. Beslik before this, but swimming in the lake is something that's pretty cool. Up next is the FFA camp, so that was a three-day camp that happened July 20th through the 22nd. It's a three-day camp in which students learned about a variety of agricultural topics, including horticulture, animal science, and more. This was the second year that we offered that camp, or that Mr. Wedenfeld at the high school offered that camp. Last year, we had 18 students. This year, we had 41 students that took advantage of that. So you can see, I did include one picture of there, too. There were live animals that were brought in, so that is actually one of our elementary students that's feeding a calf, and that calf was less than a day old that they brought over. So they got to see a lot of really cool things. There was goats and chickens, I think, too, that they had out there. So it was really, it's a really neat thing. And then last, that's on there, we had Mrs. Spiegel at the high school offered a college admissions writing class for students to help prepare them writing essays and other college readiness materials, and this year, we had 32 students that took advantage of that. We did offer that last year, but we have increased the number of students that took that this year. So lots of really great things, lots of students that are participating, and it's been, it's been really, really great. So are there any questions? I know I rattled through that pretty quick.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I was amazed at the volume of, I mean, the number of staff, the number of students.
Yeah.
I think we need an adult summer school. But, no, it was really, really great. Is the overall number of students that participated about the same, where does it compare to last year? Do you have an idea?
Sure. Our numbers are higher than last year. I don't have last year's number off the top of my head specifically for the, for the full group, but it's definitely higher than we were last year. Staffing is a little bit fluid, so in some areas, we had maybe one or two more teachers than we had last year, but we cut the number of, like, high school and college TAs in half, and paraeducators, we dropped by about two, but that's strictly just based off of need. But as, as far as students participating, we're definitely, as you can see from some of those, like, additional offerings, you know, we're attracting more students and more, more people to come and take advantage of some of these opportunities.
Yeah, it's really terrific.
Yeah.
Tasha, does, I, we're in a three-year window, right, for the attendance in summer school? Is that right in terms of how it applies?
As far as the three-year average, is that what you mean? Yes. And then just to add to that, too, so one of the things that Dom will do is create a summer school report or complete a summer school report at the end of the summer school sessions, and that will be a calculation based on the number of hours or minutes, and that's how our FTE is calculated. So we, you know, it's really great to talk about bodies and the number of students that are there, but depending on how many classes that they're taking and how often that they're there, will determine kind of how that incorporates into our total FTE and how that calculates into the formula. So having more students is a great way to start, and hopefully, they're all taking lots of classes, but just kind of wanted to add that that's how that is calculated, based on the number of minutes and hours that they're there. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
So then I guess, based off of that, like, do you do a daily attendance in each class so you know?
We do, yep, yep. So every day, we take attendance through Skyward, everything's run there. And then at the end, like Tasha said, as I'm preparing to, to do the summer school report through DPI, then we print reports based off of that and, and the number of minutes and number of students that are in. So that 850 number looks really good, like Tasha's saying, but like I said earlier, there's some students who are only taking one class. So that won't count, you know, for full, as much as a student who's taking four classes plus swim lessons. And so we add them all up to So we add them all up together and we get this magic number that we send to DPI.
Can you explain the credit recovery? That's just for high school core classes?
Correct, yep. So that's a, if a student failed one of their core classes at the high school level, then their stool, their counselor will assign them to take credit recovery to try to, you know, get the credit back from those classes.
And then do we track success of that program and like how many?
Yeah, we contract through a company, I think it's called Ingenuity, Edgenuity. And I know we were looking at a couple of different ones, but that's the one we've used two years in a row now, too. So that is certified teachers through an online program that they're able to take those courses and gain that credit back. So it's not taught by our high school teachers, it's taught through a separate online course. And we track all that just the same way attendance-wise. They have a certain number of minutes that they need to be there in order to make the criteria to pass that class and the timeframe to complete those classes as well.
And then if they don't pass that, then the next year, they have to take that class again? How many times do they have to retake a class?
I don't know how many times. I know that if they don't pass in summer school, then the F stays reflected on their transcript then. So the idea is that that credit recovery class allows them an opportunity to not have that F present on their transcript. So I'm not sure if that's a one and done thing unless it's a class, it's a requirement to pass for graduation, then they would have to take that, but.
Okay. Can we get Tasha the data on, like, over the past few years, just like how many kids were in that and who passed? And who, I'm just curious to see that.
I have some of that data, Tasha, so I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And I guess I don't know what it would mean for our budget, but would it be something that Lake Mills would consider busing for summer school? I know that that's kind of been a topic a lot of parents have asked me about and wondering if that might help bring in some students in our community who maybe necessarily couldn't do summer school otherwise?
Yeah, I know that it is a topic that comes up every year when we're discussing it. And I know it hasn't been something that we've wanted to look into, but I don't think it's, you know, I think Tasha could probably speak a little bit to more, to why. It's a big cost, which would, you know, be a factor that we would have to look at, like you said, the budget, but.
It is, and I think that since I've been in this role, summer school was, we're kind of building back up from, from COVID. And so I think that that really hasn't been a topic to, to really explore until now, these last couple of years. We've really, the program has just, you know, continues to grow. So I think that it's worthy of discussion and kind of some research to see, is this worth it? And what, what it would cost and connecting with Brad and, you know, like I said, since things have been ramping up again, I, I would think that it would be worth taking a peek at to see if it's beneficial or not. We're expanding our playground program to the, the aftercare program, I think. Because, I mean, that's, if parents are working, they can't necessarily send their kids to the half-day program. Do we have scholarships available, too, for the playground program, like low-income? Okay, so that's not a hindrance usually to be part of that. It's usually the space, it's a space that we need more of, so.
And last year, we did offer camp invention in the afternoon, which was like another option for parents to use. And we did not offer that this year as part of our summer school programs. The, the cost increased so significantly that it was not feasible to do for us. So it's something that we'll look at in the future again, but just didn't, did not make sense financially this year to do.
Well, I appreciate all of your work because our whole household did it for the first time this year and we had lots of happy kids at the end of the day, so they loved it.
That's great.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, on to Ms. Daley, the Director of Services.
Okay, so I have a number of things that I'll be covering tonight, but I'm going to start with food service. We have Kathy Quim in here, the Director of Food Service, to help answer some questions and speak to some of the things that we're going to be talking about. As we had spoke about at a previous board meeting or committee meeting, Lake Mills does have an excess cash balance and we had to come up with a plan to submit to DPI. And part of that, to spend down that excess cash balance, was the purchase of some equipment, which included dishwashers both at the high school and at the middle school, as well as some new cafeteria furniture for the high school, for some creative space ideas there. So I'm going to actually have Kathy just come up and kind of talk a little bit about the recommendations that we, that she had made for these purchases. The, the, or the quotes are attached in. I hope everybody can get at that now and have been able to take a peek. And there was also a nice video that was, that Kathy provided regarding the cafeteria space and the new seating. So that was really a great addition. So Kathy, if you just want to talk a little bit about the recommendations, we can kind of go from there.
Just to, just to confirm and to clarify, what Fund 30, I think it's 39?
Fifty.
Fifty, I'm sorry. This, we have an access for, an access of funds in Fund 50 that we can't move to Fund 10 or Fund, to other things.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we have to spend this, this Fund 50 down?
Yes.
Per federal regulations.
Yes, and thank you for pointing that out because it's important to know that this is separate from Fund 10. I know later on, you're going to be learning or I will be reporting that there will be a deficit there. So it's kind of confusing and it can be confusing that in one area, we need to spend money because we have excess and in another, it's different. So that's all kind of part of all the different funds that we have in school finance. But yes, this is a separate fund from a general operating fund where we do have excess balance that we've, we've, we've built up over the years that we need to spend down.
Hello, I want to thank you for inviting me to this meeting this month. I'm just here to provide a little more detail on the bids that we have for a new dishwasher at the high school. Currently, our dishwasher at the high school is, we think, we, nobody really knows, about 17 years old. Yeah, I couldn't find any, any information on that, but we're thinking that's about right. This year, I had to call maintenance on it quite a bit. We had general parts from Madison come out almost monthly to fix it. And our final kind of reassessment of the equipment was, we needed to repair it and the repair was over $5,000. To really, it's, it leaks, it causes a lot of line buildup on the floors and all over the machine itself, which is really hard to clean and everything. So we decided instead of, you know, putting $5,000 into a 17-year-old piece of equipment, to possibly look at some new bids and replacing it, which we kind of feel is beneficial. And I did provide three bids from local businesses. One is Fine Brothers, one is Kavanaugh Restaurant Supply, and the other one is Belter. And they're all from either the Waukesha, Milwaukee, Madison area. Two of the bids do include shipping, receiving, setting up. And I did confirm this all with the sales rep that gave me the offers because the bids were given to us 15 to 30 days prior, which some of them say that they're no longer good, but I did confirm today that they are all still good for the, for their bids. So two of them, which is Fine Brothers and Kavanaugh Restaurants, both offer that setup. And the big thing is, because our maintenance does not like to deal with my old equipment, they will dispose of the old equipment for us. So the one thing that I really want to point out is I had several of them come, actually come out to the site and Kavanaugh was one of them and they came up with a full team, a full team of electricians, plumbers. They measured and, that's my recommendation, even though it's a couple hundred dollars more than the lower bid, I just really felt they were very thorough in their communications and their representation of what they have to offer to me. And I felt very comfortable with them, with what they provided. Belter of Waukesha, they only include shipping and we've kind of, we have ordered things from them in the past and it is truly, they ship it to us, we have to figure out how to get it off the truck. We have to have our custodians do a lot of extra work. The only thing that's not included in the bid is electrical and plumbing. And we do have our own electricians and plumbers. And the nice thing about Kavanaugh is they said, we do have our electricians, we do have our plumbers, but I will tell you, you will save a lot of money if you use your own. So those are my three bids for a new dishwasher. We are looking in the future of replacing the middle school dishwasher because again, this year, we had to provide a lot of maintenance on that. But currently, I only have two bids on it and I need to provide three for you. So in the next month or so, I'll, I'll be providing that for you. As for the furniture, I did provide kind of a layout.
Can I just stop you just for a second, Kathy? And that, that's at the board's discretion. If the two bids are, are enough, then the recommendation would be to move forward with that, since we do have these funds to spend down. So I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if that's okay with the board, if those two bids are okay, we would like to move forward.
I, I think that makes sense to avoid other costly repairs in the same boat as the one at the high school.
Awesome, awesome. Sorry to interrupt.
Was the two bids for the middle school, where was the, the middle school was, were they?
I can provide them for you. They are, it's a smaller unit, so it's less expensive. It's a kind of a, it's not a conveyor belt unit. They have limited space there. So I'm not sure if they were, they were provided, okay.
And I believe it was Kavanaugh and Fine Brothers that?
Yes.
Gave us those.
And it is listed out in board docs.
And then if you look at the both, then Fine Brothers was a little bit more expensive on the middle school unit and Kavanaugh was a little less expensive, so in all, kind of.
Evens out, yeah.
Evens out there. Any questions on the dishwasher?
I'm, I'm just curious, do we actually have our own plumber and electrician in the school district or?
Not under our staff, no, but we have a contact that we use.
We have a contact with someone, yeah, okay.
On the furniture, ready? I have been in contact with two different companies over the furniture and the new design of the cafeteria. And I guess my goal with designing a new cafeteria at the high school is to give our students and our staff of just a welcoming space. I'm not sure if you've been at the high school during our lunch periods, but it's not very welcoming. And I know Dom can speak for that because he supervised many, many times in our lunch period. Currently, we seat in three different areas. We seat the freshmen up on the gym, or in the gymnasium stage area. And then we have some tables that are kind of in the multipurpose room. But the focus that I'm looking at right now is that main cafeteria space. And that main cafeteria space currently seats 150 people. But we only utilize about 100 and, oh, actually about, about 90 to 100 seats of that. Our students are choosing to sit in the lobby floors in smaller groups. And the reason why is we have large tables that have 10 seats attached to them. And as we all know, our students aren't in groups of 10. Our students like to congregate and, you know, they're for best buddies or friends. And so our, my goal with this new space is to kind of give them that welcoming seating. Welcoming all groups, all friends. And if it's a larger group, we have seating that would seat eight. But we also have those neat coffee table settings, those high tops, those booths that we are kind of designing. And it's not set in stone, but it's kind of the, the design that we've kind of come up in, that we kind of both like. I've worked with Kale Vogel at the high school and he trusts my decision, is what he said. And he knows the need. He knows that, you know, coming into the high school and seeing students sitting on the floor is just, it's just not right. So I just, it's a nice goal of us to create that space that just shows our LCAP pride. So Palmer Hamilton is the one company that I've really been dealing with. And I will not need to go out for a bid for three companies because they actually are part of, and we are part of, a Sourcewell Group, which does our outsourcing for us. Does our bidding, does our RFPs, does all of that for us. So it kind of saves me time and space. It show, they give us the best prices that they have gone out to bid for. And again, I just really enjoyed working with them, so that's kind of it.
I was going to ask, like you said, that was one of the things we saw in the EUA presentation, where all of the kids sitting on the floor in the entryway. So do you feel like with this new structure of the cafeteria and the seating arrangement, that that will eliminate the kids scattered throughout the high school and give them a space to all be during that lunch period time? Or are we still not even providing enough seats for all of the kids to eat during that time?
I truly believe there's enough seats for all of our students to be sitting in a seat or at a table. It's also allowing our students, you know, where does, where do we draw the line in allowing our students to do this? If we weren't allowing them to do it, then they would have no choice but to find a seat. But, I mean, when you look at it, there's not 60 kids, there's probably 30 kids? About 30 kids in the lobby and in the hallways. So even with that, bringing them into our lunchroom, into our new cafeteria space, we still will have more space for our students that are choosing possibly to go off campus because we are an open campus, to, to keep them here. You know, hey, this is a cool place. I want to hang out. I want to be there. I can hang out at a foretop and feel like I'm at a food court or at a cool coffee shop because it's just a lot nicer than sitting with 10 people that you might not necessarily want to be hanging out with. And I know I've held some interviews and some meetings at those tables and they're not very comfortable, so, yes.
I just see this as more learning space, too, or gathering space for the community or after-school events. And so I think it goes far beyond just the cafeteria and lunchtime and all that. So I, I love it. I think it looks amazing.
Thank you.
If it's approved, do you have a timeline on construction implementation?
So it will not occur before school starts. It is a 14- to 16-week lead time, but they have said that they really need to just be able to come in one evening. You know, close down the building, or not the building, but that space will clear everything out for them and they'll come in and set everything up. So whether it's maybe during an in-service time or, you know, time that we know that the building isn't being utilized, we can have them come in.
And with the, the installation of like the high tops and stuff, will that decrease the capacity of that lunchroom? Right, I think you said 150 able, are able to sit in it now?
Yes.
Will it, will it decrease the capacity with this?
It will give us seating for 154.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it'll give us a few more seats.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I was about to sneeze. The other question I had was, in the video, it talked about how like, like you said, it's a space that you can utilize as-is, but it's also typically a space that you need to be utilized for maybe something else. So I, I guess some of the tables looked as though that they could fold, but do we have space to be able to move everything aside and still be able to utilize it as more of an open space if need be?
We do, because currently, we fold up our tables right now and I'm not sure where our custodians shove them, but they kind of just shove them against the wall. And that's what we're looking with this furniture. It's all mobile. It's, the seats will fold up, the stairs, the chairs are very stackable, very lightweight, very durable. So we're looking at the mobility of these pieces of furniture.
Perfect. All right, super. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
And the question to the board, will we want to vote on the, the middle school when it comes to it?
I'm good.
Okay. Got it. All right, on to your next topics, Tasha.
Hey. So the next topic I have is the 22-23 budget update, so last year, last year's budget. So after completing a majority of our general ledger updates, finalizing some grant claims, I can report that we will finish the 22-23 school year with adding to the fund balance. I'm looking at about 1.5% that will add to fund balance, so that equates to about $300,000. I'm still waiting on some final documents from Badger Bank, so I have to record some interest. Hopefully, we have some interest that we earned instead of lost. Last year, we lost a little interest on our scholarship trusts. I'm going to finalize the S R 3 claim. I believe we'll have a little leftover that we'll be able to apply to this next year. But I'm still finalizing a few of the payroll pieces and working out how that works with the EBIS portion and then, and then the regular portion. So that's taking a little bit longer than I had hoped, but the good news is that we'll have a little leftover to apply to next year. I don't have an exact dollar amount on that. It's not going to move mountains or anything like that, but be helpful. And then the other thing that we are seeing is we're having a few 22-23 invoices trickle in here and there. So we still have to record those in that year, so that's going to adjust that number a little bit. But nothing huge that's going to sway us one way or the other. So it's a great, great news to report is that we'll be, we'll be adding a little bit to fund balance. The audit is scheduled for Monday and Tuesday next week, so I'm finalizing some things for them as well. So busy in the business office right now. So that's just a quick update. I don't have any budget adjustments. So I know in the action items, we have, I think A is budget adjustments for 22-23 and I don't have any. So we'll be able to, I'm not sure if we have to hit that and then skip over it or how that really works, but I won't have anything to report. So we'll be able to, I'm not sure if we have to hit that and then skip over it or how that really works, but I won't have anything to report in that section. Any questions on 22-23?
Tasha, so we're, you know, in the preliminary budget, we're showing a deficit of 1.1 million. And just assuming there will be a deficit when the final budget is done. How does that work in terms of, at the point that we're approving a final budget? Does that have to, because this will be the first year I think we've had a situation with a deficit. Does that budget have to be balanced? Or in other, in other words, whether it's a referendum or funding from our reserves, the budget we approve doesn't have to include that, is that right?
Correct. No, what will happen is that we'll just know that our plan is that we're taking that from fund balance. So it doesn't have to necessarily be balanced. We're just knowing that we're approving a budget that is in deficit.
Okay, all right. So the assumption is the fund balance, because we wouldn't know even if we're going to do a referendum and whether it would even pass.
Correct, correct.
And that would be applied to the next year anyway, right?
Anyways, so regardless, the situation we're in right now is that it has to come from, from fund balance.
So it's a quick update on 22-23. Moving into 23-24. So I'd like to kind of talk again about the low revenue ceiling. I know we talked about this last board meeting. But I'm still holding on to the slightest little glimmer of hope. But last month we talked about this, so I just kind of want to talk about it again and what it is. So the low revenue ceiling, how the board or how the state passed the budget this year was that if districts went to a refer, an operational referendum and failed, their low revenue ceiling is frozen at the, the dollar amount of which it was in the year that the operational referendum was tried. As you know, we failed in '22, so we are subject to a freeze in our low revenue ceiling for the next three years. And we are at $10,000. And the low revenue ceiling was increased with the budget, the state budget that it was approved. It was increased for all districts to $11,000. So out of the 420-plus districts, there are 19 that are subject to this freeze due to failing an operational referendum. So they are frozen at whatever rate they were at in the year that they failed. There is a small provision in that original bill that said if, if your operational referendum was tied to that of a new building, this does not apply. However, that language unfortunately was not added into this new bill that was passed. So unfortunately for Lake Mills, as it stands, we still are frozen at the $10,000. The difference of $10,000 and $11,000 is about $850,000, which is almost our entire deficit. It's close to it. So with that being said, I did, with the help of many, reached out to try to do a little more advocacy and see what we could do. So I have an appeal submitted to Tricia Collins, who is the state superintendent, Assistant State Superintendent for the Department Division of Finance. I did receive word on Friday that it's under review. So Mark Elworthy is a School Finance Services Director at DPI and he emailed me back and said that this may have been overlooked and that it's under review. So, and to try to be patient. So that's where it stands. I'm not sure what will happen. I'm just kind of in a wait and see. At this point, I'm still budgeting and I've, I'm reporting on that we are going to stay at the $10,000 low revenue ceiling.
Do you know of those 19 districts, how many of them are like us that did an operational tied to a building?
We are the only one.
I appreciate your work, because this is something I shared with our representatives before it even went through, is to try and help them understand how, yes, we did have this, but it was tied to something else. And so I appreciate your effort to go even further, to let them know that it's a different, different thing.
Right, and I know that there is, go ahead.
Sorry, I would, to be honest too, that those other districts, they still, I don't feel like they should be punished because of, it's just really disheartening that.
It seems counter.
It's the will of, it's the will of the voters and I just disagree with that. I'm very saddened for those districts too. So I do hope that we can tweak, I mean, obviously we want to have, be in good standing, but I'm still, my heart goes out to those other school districts.
I agree, and I know that there were legislators that were going into the last minutes of when they were doing their deliberations, trying to, you know, pull for those districts, those 19 districts. And you may hear 28 districts, and there were 28 that were under the low revenue ceiling, but once they got the 325 per pupil, it put them up over and then it didn't apply. So if you're wondering, oh, Tasha said 19, but it's, I'm hearing 28, that's why. But yes, we are the only district that had it tied to. There was one district that didn't have the, the reason in DPI that, when I was looking at it. But, so there's potentially another, but I believe all the questions were related to regular operations for the other districts. So I guess we'll see. Like I said, I did, I am presenting the, the budget to be approved with the, with the $10,000. And that still leaves us at about $1.1 million deficit for next year. So some changes that have happened since June, since we last talked, was the general aid was released. So that's, that document is in Board Docs. But what happened was there was an increase in the general aid, so that October 15th estimate, that July 1 estimate, that increased. And what that did was decrease our tax levy for the community. So it didn't do anything to our revenue limit. It just adjusted things around a little bit. The voucher program, the state did approve an increase for voucher expenditures. So I did increase a little bit of the estimate for that by $46,000. The increase for grades nine through 12 went from $9,045 to $12,000, so about $3,000 per student there. We won't know that final number until October 15th, and there's no way for us to find out what that is until then. So I basically took a calculation based on what it's been in the past and where we've hovered around and added that $3,000 about per student to, to give us. That $246,000 is what I'm estimating for vouchers, voucher expenditures. Let's see, so with that being said, again, we're about at that 1, 1.1 million deficit for 23-24 school year. The estimated levy is $11,898,054 with a mill rate of $7.76. And again, this will all be adjusted in October. I'd also like to add that this is the budget regardless of what happened. So I could go turn around tomorrow and find out that we, we did get the $11,000, but this is a budget that's, that we're approving tonight, should it be approved, but we're approving tonight. So this will be what I present and report on at the annual meeting in September. So per the law, I have to have this approved and then it needs to be posted in the paper for two weeks in a row prior to the, to the annual meeting. Should something change, we could maybe sneak in another approval to have it updated, but everything changes again in October. So it's up to the board if they want us to do special meetings to kind of sneak that in. We certainly could. But the, the real final is after that October 15th date.
Can I ask, how was it reported to the paper? Because I think like, you know, Ken was saying, I think when some people might read that in the paper, if they maybe haven't followed what we've discussed and kind of what's going on, they might look at that number and say like, why the heck did you budget in the deficit? So I, I wonder, how is, is it just listed? Do we have an opportunity to give a synopsis?
In the past, there has not been a narrative. It's just been a chart that lists out all the expenditures. It's kind of a DPI-regulated template that I fill in and that's what has to go to the paper. I did recently, both Dr. Olson and I had connected with one of the reporters at the leader and we talked a little bit about the low revenue ceiling and what that's doing. And then he had asked us a few things about the budget and what it means to Lake Mills. So that narrative and that story should be coming out in the paper. So that piece is there, but in terms of what's required to be reported, it's really just a big spreadsheet.
I, looking at from the Baird, the February, March documents that you gave, Baird Budget Forecast Model. And if we're holding or just adding to for 2022-23, the fund balance percentage of expenditures, we were probably going to be right around the 30%.
We should be, mm-hmm.
And the 1.1, if it, if it holds, do you, do you know what that would reduce us to? Or can you provide that another time?
I could provide that for you. What I would like to do is get all our numbers updated in that model and then I can get the most accurate. But from a quick, quick math in my head, I believe that it brings us down, we're still over that 20%, which I think is part of the board's work and, and the work that we've all done through this year as we knew we were facing a deficit, is to keep it above that 20%, so I can, I can say that. I know it's over that.
Got it.
I wanted to say, I want to say it was around 22 or 23. But until I plug in all the, all the new updated numbers into that model, I could, I could report back though if you'd like.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We'd almost have to, just a comment on that. We'd almost have to think of, once that time comes and we look at that number, it seems we'd have to think about the second year and what we would need. You know, and that would be a real rough estimate, but let's say we bring it down to 22. And then you might be actually committing to go and, you know, you might have to go to 17 or something. So that, I think year two is going to be maybe where a lot of the issue is going to be.
And all depends if we decide as a board and as a community to go to refer, operational referendum if need be and if it passes. And that's all moving pieces.
We'd have, yeah, we'd have a good understanding of where the numbers are.
And that's something that's really nice with the Baird model, is it's a great tool to be able to forecast out. It can forecast out up to five years, but really those one and two are the other ones that are going to be the most accurate, especially next year now when we know what our budget is going to be. The other thing I wanted to add, oh, is with the low revenue ceiling and the operational and how that freezes everything, if, if we were to go to an operational referendum and we were successful, that lift of our low, of that freeze would go away and we would be bumped up to the $11,000. So it's something we have to talk about as we're talking about the dollar amount that we want to go for, because we have to remember that, that that's going to add to our revenue limit. Our revenue limit is, is bumping up to that $11,000. And how that's going to work with how our FTEs work out and all that is going to be continued conversation, right?
Wowzers.
Yes, yes. So there's so many moving parts and, you know, that's why we report on it as much as we do, because things change so frequently all over the board. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that that freeze could be lifted if we were to pass an operational referendum.
All right, okay. Do you feel that you have enough like support for, to keep up with all this and the professional development you need? Or like, you don't have an assistant, like, how do you do all this?
The district, we do. I mean, we have, we have Roseanne in the office and she does a really nice job. We bounce things off of each other. Megan probably attest that we have probably conversations that are, we are going out of our minds. But, but yes, I think that it's, it's, it's a learning curve for this position. And I know that this position, I heard a lot of people say that it takes three years before you feel really good. And I can say that I feel much better this year even than I did over last year in terms of all of, all of the pieces, because it's a lot of juggle. But absolutely, there's lots of professional development opportunities that I can take advantage of and do try to as much as possible through OSBO. And there's a leadership academy that we can do. There's lots of different things that we can do and I try to do as much as I can.
Your hard work is not unnoticed, so thank you.
Of course. Okay, so that, that budget will be in our action items to approve a little bit later. What do we have next? Okay, so the employee handbook revisions. So I am reporting on this on behalf of Dr. Olson. She had submitted the document on some suggested or recommended handbook revisions. So she did put in a lot of narrative on the reasoning behind it, but I'll just kind of summarize that. The first one is in regards to our sick leave. So this is allowing staff to use sick leave for their spouse or domestic partner if they have any medical appointments or are sick. And that is something that I believe that we've been allowing. It's just really a technicality of putting it into the handbook to say that you're allowed to use it for your spouse as well as spouse or domestic partner as well. And then she also added some language regarding the timeframe of what you should be reporting that. And the suggestion is having that be within an hour of your normal start time. So that's the, the summary of that change. The next one is overused sick leave, so allowing two personal days to roll over within a year and a maximum of 10 to be accrued. So Dr. Olson meets with a focus group and oftentimes the personal time is brought up. And in, I think it was two years ago, we started that we pay out $60 for every personal day that is unused at the end of the year. And staff still felt like that maybe wasn't enough or that the dollar amount wasn't enough. It wasn't as motivating to not use it. So they continued to do so, which is certainly what we want them to be doing, but also being able to use those for, for their, for other things later on. So that, hence the idea to be able to roll over those, those two days into the next year and be able to kind of pre-plan for some things. I should have asked if there was any questions about the sick leave or this piece before I move on, okay. And then emergency school closings, so this is in regards to allowing support staff to use their personal time when we have an emergency school day closing. So in the past, those, those staff members would just go unpaid. And there was a lot of talk about, you know, them using some time. And, and we believe it's fair to be able to have them use a sick or personal day to, to be able to be paid for that time if we have those inclement weather days or any other kind of emergency. Okay, and then finally, the last one, it was in regards to when, when new staff are hired, when their health insurance benefits start. And so the way the handbook reads currently is that coverage will commence on the first month following 30 days of employment. So there is, there's a gap of 30 days where they have to cover themselves. And so there's some language in here again regarding, you know, why we would think that it would, would make most sense to have it just start the, the first of the following month. So they shouldn't have any gap in the coverage from any kind of previous employment. And I believe that that is it in term, in regards to handbook updates. Any questions with any of those?
Yeah, thanks. I, I will say that starting the insurance is a great thing to have it in effect. Just my general impression from the changes, they look to be more employee-friendly, trying to make it better, basically.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, okay, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any people signed up for the comment section? All right, then we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following: June 19th, regular meeting minutes, July 7th, special meeting minutes, June Treasurers' Report and vouchers and invoices, and the personnel report. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Hearing none, I ask for a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Rihanna Beslik, aye.
Ken Imers, aye.
Andrea Graham, aye.
Kirk Lund, aye.
Amy Litcher, aye.
All right, we will skip over action item 2022-23 budget adjustments, because there's no items to be taken. And we'll move to the approval of the preliminary budget for the 2023-24 school year as we just discussed.
I'll move the budget approve, the board approve the preliminary budget for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers, aye.
Andrea Graham, aye.
Kirk Lund, aye.
Rihanna Beslik, aye. Amy Litcher, aye.
Support staff pay increases. This was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting a couple, three weeks ago. And I need a motion?
I'll move the board approve the support staff pay increases as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Are there any questions, discussions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
And the next is professional staff pay increases that was discussed at the committee, the last Finance Committee meeting.
I'll move the board to approve the professional staff pay increases as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
This is, I guess, one question. This is just the 4.7, correct? This, we have not adjusted the salary schedule at all.
The salary schedules are on here, so that is what...
But adjusted based on the 4.7. We had talked about possibly adjusting, but that would be at a future committee meeting or...
Correct.
Gotcha, okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
On to the next one, administration and middle manager pay increases.
I'll move the board to approve the administrative and middle manager pay increase, increases as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and again, these is, well, this, these are increases that were discussed at the last Finance Committee meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none, it's been moved, it's been moved and seconded, right? Okay, okay, moved and seconded, hearing done, roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Next, student academic standards for the 202324 school year pursuant to Section 120.12, parentheses 13, and the school boards must identify the school district's academic standards per law, and this is very standard and per the code, so.
I move the board to approve the district's student academic standards for the 202324 school year pursuant to Section 120.12, parentheses 13.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Just quickly, I think you mentioned it, this is really just state code, right? Okay.
All right, any other? Okay, it's been, it, the, I'll close the discussion, and I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the employee handbook revisions that were discussed just recently, just a couple minutes ago.
I move the board to approve the employee handbook revisions as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Now, next is the food service purchases, as was presented by Ms. Koopin.
Koeman.
Koeman.
I'll move the board to approve the following food service purchases. First is a Jackson WWS model dishwasher for the Lake Mills High School in the amount of $20,114.16 from Kavanagh. And then we also decided to take the Champion Model Genesis Dishwasher for Lake Mills Middle School in the amount of $17,948.60 from Kavanagh as well. And then the Palmer Hamilton Source Wells Furniture Solutions with related accessories and services for the Lake Mills High School's cafeteria in the amount of $111,619.
All right. Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions, discussions? And I'd like to make a note that because we're approving the Lake, the high school and the middle school dishwasher, that is the combined low bid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Okay, the Lake Mills Recreation Department lease agreement is next up, and is this more or less, or just...
It's $100 more a month.
Okay. This is for rental for the offices at the Leader Building.
The Leader Building, and this is a Fund 80 expenditure. Okay?
I move the board to approve the Lake Mills Recreation Department lease agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, friendly amendment with AD Hawks LLC as presented?
With AD Hawks LLC as presented. Sorry, I don't have all that in front of me.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Okay, lastly, gifts, and it still amazes me, every month of the generous donations to the community members and their organizations have to the school district.
I'll move the board approve and thank all of our generous donors for their continued support for our students and programs here at the Lake Mills Area School District. The first donation is a $150 donation to the elementary school's garden, and a $700 donation to the district's food pantry, The Mill, from the Tyranina Ladies Club. The second is a $100 donation to the AFS International Club at the Lake Mills High School from Mrs. Barb Peckard.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Hearing no questions or discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, we are done with our action items, and we are moving on to upcoming board agenda items. And I see here, for our August meeting, the audit report and the seclusion restraint report.
Yes, you know, I, I thought I saw the, is it called CESA 2?
CESA.
CESA 2 for this meeting, but I don't see it on the agenda anymore. Was it ever in there, or?
Was, I think it was pertaining to removal of our contract.
Yeah, we had it on your, on Board Report B, Ken Imers, Clark, CESA 2 Board of Control Update and Correspondence.
Oh, in the correspondence area.
We must have just skipped over that first part, your update of CESA 2.
Okay. Should I just give it up?
Why not?
Okay, good, because I don't want to have to do it next time. Admittedly, I didn't, this was a meeting, each year, CESA 2 has a general meeting, and this meeting is essentially to confirm, and a few other things, it's to also confirm their new board for the coming year. And what's interesting, and so we have contracts with CESA 2 for, we do some, what's called dialogue with attorney action, so we contract for that. We also contract for Title III Consortium and Transition Advisory Network. Those are the three things that we, we have with them. There are, so CESA 2 is actually Cooperative Educational Service Agency. It provides services to support 74 school districts throughout Dane Green, Jefferson, Kenosha, Racine Rock, and Walworth. It's actually governed by a section of the state statutes, which allows it to enter into contracts and act as a liaison between school districts, the Department of Public Instruction, and the U.S. Department of Education, which is kind of interesting. So when we went to the meeting, they have clusters of districts, and the clusters are four to five, where is it here? Here we go. Our, our cluster H is Cambridge, Jefferson, Johnson Creek, Lake Mills, and Watertown. And, and out of that cluster, one of the things we needed to do is vote on a representative for the cluster, who then sits on their, their board that meets monthly. And so the person that has been doing it, David Schrader from Watertown, wanted to do it again, so everybody gave him the nod for that. And, and then after the meeting, they actually have a board meeting, and they do, actually what this board does, they have a reorg meeting. That's their time to do that. They had a present, a nice presentation in this meeting. It was essentially saying, don't forget about the teachers' well-being, you know, the, with the focus, not entirely on students, but they talked a lot about the, the scope of what well-being would mean for teachers. And they gave us a little chart, you know, graph our own well-being. Not sure how well I did there, but they looked at emotional, occupational, intellectual, environment, financial, social, physical, and spiritual, all in the realm of well-being. So it was a nice presentation, and then it ended on the, the voting and official voting for the board member representatives for the year, so that would be it.
All right. And for other future agenda items, I just wanted to add one, not for the August, but a September, the quarterly, the superintendent review kind of check-in from our organizational meeting, that, that, that would, the, the next date would, would be our September meeting, so.
Okay.
I will have some more notes on what to think about in a couple months, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, well, I will move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
And I'm guessing there'll be no discussion, so I will ask for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose, same sign, we are adjourned. All right.